Miller's chewing there. I'll just reiterate Johanna's comments, just how grateful we are to.
Good, no?
We are live that I can see.
Awesome. Yeah, we're just really excited to be at this point, like Treasurer DeFort mentioned, really kind of had a truncated update, if you will, but wanted to make sure that we're now getting the plan and the plan updates on a good reg- regular cadence for you guys to tee up your budgeting process, so you can have fresh information going into that. So, again, really appreciate members of the Citizens Committee being here and their continued dedication as well, and obviously, say it every time, but you really have some jams with Clerk Miller and Treasurer DeFort, and it's a pleasure working with them.
Now they're gonna wanna raise.
Alright, I'll leave that to you guys.
Okay.
So, we're just gonna dive in. The plan, just to kind of set this up a little bit, what you're seeing right here is a draft update. So, post this meeting, we will finalize this update, and that will become the update going forward. So, if there's any commentary, any adjustment that the Commission would like to see, there's still some opportunity for that, and just want to make that clear. I'm not gonna spend too much time on the front sections. You guys already know the process. We've obviously been through that.
We do have some updates for you.
Go ahead, yes.
Our department head. Yep, Clapp is no longer Court Services. That is DeeDee Phillips.
Okay.
And I noticed two spots, like right up front, that had Skip's name on there. Can't remember where the other one was. There's two areas that have those.
Okay, thank you. Excellent. So, we'll make, we'll make those changes as well. So, gonna dive right in. I think I will just kind of highlight the prioritization. Obviously, there's gonna be some ebb and flow, and certainly to how projects progress and, and or don't, and, you know, how things work that way. But there was no major adjustment to the priority. I would mention on slide seven, or page seven, Doug, we will reference back to the adjacency diagram and the analysis that was done there, because that, in the future, particularly with other opportunities that we'll discuss here briefly, that will play into some of that space planning, where certain departments go, how they interact with the public, and so on and so forth. So, that, that analysis is very much alive and well.
That was the circular graph, wasn't it?
Yep, yep, exactly. So, who interacts with whom, and how to be most efficient when potentially making adjustments in facility space? I'll just touch briefly on page nine, the, the public engagement piece. So, again, you, as you guys know, this is an ongoing effort. So, as the county has updates like this, we'll continue to make the public aware of those updates. We have made recent ones, as you're aware, to the website, as well as some social media posts, as well as some press release related to this update. So, again, that we're involving the public in everything that we do, and trying to make sure that this is, this is well-known out in the public. And there will be more to come, right? So, if there's adjustments to the plan, as the plan continues to morph and come and be implemented, and we will continue to assist in that. So, going straight to slide 12, and this is particular to the Goldust property. There is an update here. You guys are aware of this. The county has now procured design on the facility, and is now looking to do an RFP process for construction. So, that's significant progress in that regard. And we'll talk a little bit more in detail about this project in particular when we get to the financial plan, because there's some good update.
So, we need to put out publicly that the CUP has not been approved yet. That was actually punted at the last planning and zoning meeting until April 11th. We are designing, but nothing has yet been approved.
Okay.
They just didn't have time to get to it that night.
Okay, so on the 11th, that's when that CUP will be
Hopefully.
discussed. Okay.
And then all.
Right.
A contingent upon.
Commissioner Mopin's actually driving right now.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, you can see there, there's a
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Not necessarily approved, but you do see the CUP number and so, but yeah, great, great point, and it's good to be talking about that process.
We need to put in here too, Cameron. So, we've been talking to Idaho Power about a substation within this parcel, and they will also have to go through a CUP. But they will take a portion of this. We will be negotiating with them on acceptable terms for them to purchase a part of this, or a substation. So, we probably should put something.
Make mention of that.
Yeah. And again, that's also, you know, they have to go through the CUP process also.
Excellent. Okay, excellent. Thank you. So, again, great progress there. I mean, I think that's a good example of just continuing to move projects through, figure them out, and, and keep them rolling. And again, there will be another touch point on that in the, in the CFP portion. Transition to the, we'll call it number two, or the second priority of the courthouse. Some really exciting stuff here. If we go down just a bit, Commissioner, right there, yep. So, you know, as, as was released in the, in a news release, there's some great opportunity here for the county to potentially procure some space to help with this particular priority. And so, excited to kind of continue to explore that, and what that means to the county, particularly from a space planning perspective, but then also from a potential cost savings perspective. So, a lot more to come there. Don't know how much you guys wanted to discuss that or not, but definitely some update in that regard.
We don't know a lot yet. I mean, we haven't offered it until we secure our appraisal. We don't, we don't know what that looks like yet.
But I think we're gonna know probably in another month or so, about a lot more solid stuff.
Yeah, and so, we, you know, just kind of, as that's a fluid process, we wanted to be at least, you know, putting forward what we knew in this update. And to, again, to the, kind of the living document that this is, we'll continue to communicate those, those iterations and updates as we go. But, again, just great opportunity for the county there. Okay.
Yeah, we hope it comes to fruition. Be awesome.
Yeah. Okay, we'll transition now to the fairgrounds. So, I think the major point on this is the procurement of the arena, and then what that potentially, what opportunities that creates for the county. That arena will need to be constructed, and obviously, to proceed that is where do you site the arena on the property? And so, you know, there's some discussion there, certainly some need to engage with the Fair Board, you all, and also the, potentially the public, on how best to do that. And really, this kind of highlights the need for the, the previous recommendation of potentially doing a master site plan for the fairgrounds.
You're not talking about the rodeo arena. You're talking about facility. Is that correct?
Just the, an arena, I believe, was purchased. I don't know the scale and scope of that.
I think, from the way I understand it, the arena is pretty much gonna stay, stay about the same area. The materials, the bucking chutes, the tower, all that stuff has been delivered. It's on-site now. But they don't plan to start deconstruction until the snow goes and the ground thaws out. But the existing arena is basically gonna be replaced with the announcer stand on the north end of the arena, and then two sets of bleachers
Okay.
added to that area. Underneath the announcer stand, I think there's also a, kind of like a, is it a restroom, Johanna?
Restroom.
Bathrooms and something else.
Concession.
Concession stand, yeah.
Yeah, so, let me make sure that this turns on. That one's red. Might have to share. The fairgrounds listed here in the master facilities plan is the area as a whole. The arena purchase is just a portion of the fairgrounds that have talked about being updated. Essentially, what we're saying through this update is that, as a recommendation through the original master facilities plan, it would be prudent for either a citizens committee to be created, or for the existing Fair Board to be involved in the future planning of that site, so that it can be best utilized for Valley County. And that action has not started. The portions that have started are the purchase of the arena, the upgrades of the back, the bathrooms, and then the announcer stand.
So, we haven't talked about anything that has to do with another facility in that area?
Correct. No. So, the master facilities plan was, we identified all of the assets that Valley County owns, and we prioritized the importance of those assets for needing upgrades. So, number three on the priority list of the top eight assets that Valley County owns is the fairgrounds, and the need for that facility, that area, to be utilized to the best use for the Valley County citizens.
So, we get the road department out of there, we really can't put together a plan to.
Right.
Well, and I think that we could, we need to start thinking about getting some folks together to talk about kind of what they would like to see.
Right.
You know, in the case of the county, there's a lot of simple things, like we need a place to go and vote. They have an election. That's gonna save us money having to rent facilities. Do that. That's certainly one aspect. You know, there's so many ideas out there. It's gonna take a lot of work to figure out how we're gonna crow all these, and what do we actually really want to do with this facility? Want to rent it out for weddings?
Johanna, he's got another one there now.
You know, any kind of family reunion events. Do we want to do that? Those are the questions that we're still a long ways out on, but.
And my question is, is so Scott has a plan to put in the bathroom and the, you know, can, is
Concessions.
concessions. Should we convene a group sooner rather than later, so we don't build that concession in the bathroom in a location that isn't a long-term viable spot for that? So.
Well, I think, I don't know, Cherry, I'm not a guy, a developer, but I would assume you would want a bathroom near a large facility like this. It's gonna hold a lot of people for whatever venues there, rodeos, or motorcycle races, or whatever that is, and then a separate facility that's an indoor facility, I guess I'm gonna say, with the roof and heat, and then bathrooms and that for bigger functions, community functions, that kind of deal.
I agree with you 100%. I think we need it close to that, but if we are looking at a long-term, you know, now we are gonna own more ground there. You know, where is parking gonna be? Do we want connectivity between our buildings that might be there? You know, so we could build that bathroom in a location that all of a sudden, we think, we want to put a road access into a merit title building, or, you know, something like that. So, I agree with you 100%. It needs to be close to that. I think we need a master plan for that something, so that we're picking away a little bit as we go on that, too. There is CBDG grants out there that McKenzie is going to put another $50,000 in, in this next quarter. And I think maybe that first one would be our planning money in order to, you know, start facilitating a long-term plan there.
Well, and the other issue that we gotta kind of throw in with this, like you were talking about, is on the south end. If we do end up with a title company, I think we're gonna need more parking that facility. And I've looked at it. There's not much to the east, but there is some room west of the building between there and the highway, but it would take a lot of dirt work and bill and all that kind of stuff to build more parking lot there. If we put one down on the bottom near the arena, that's gonna be a really hard spot to keep thought out. It's gonna be no sun, and it's gonna be slick, and a first spot for people to have to walk from, but.
Geothermal down there.
I think, yeah, and there is a ton of geothermal on the south end of the arena. I have actually waited in it.
Concrete heated by geothermal's a good way to.
Be sweet. We'd use that on a facility.
Yeah, we could. I think we should put something in there, honestly, my opinion only, that we go out for a planning grant and get something in place that actually shows that whole footprint, and so that we can build to it and not make decisions based upon what we know today to be true, but.
And I think there's gonna be some conflicting desires for that, because I know the fair wants to use the interior of this bigger facility to show livestock and animals and that kind of stuff. So, I don't know how you do that, have a nice interior facility, but those are the things that we gotta flush out, figure out how it's gonna work. There's also gonna be some pretty heavy expanse tearing down the old facilities that are down there, and that nobody's been thinking much about.
And I guess, you know, to find consensus, that's the way to do it, is sort of planning mechanisms. So, you bring a bunch of the community together, and, you know, citizens from the north and, you know, Donley area, and, I mean, get the entire region to come together to look at this as a long-term facility plan, and, and get everybody on board. So, it's not just about one, you know, group that uses the fairgrounds, because if we do it correctly, it's gonna be a long-term vision that a lot of different types of groups can use.
Oh, yeah. That's the goal.
That's the goal.
So, Commissioners, with that in mind, we'll, we'll make some adjustments potentially to this section, and if I am hearing you correctly, it's worthwhile to maybe bring forward a master site planning exercise to you as a, a scope, and then we'll get, work with McKenzie to see if we can fund that. Is that appropriate? Okay.
A CBDG grant, I think. Lindsay, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but it's, it's specifically for benefit to the communities. Plus, there's another one out there from T-Mobile. It's another $50,000 for rodeo grounds specifically.
You said the CBD grant was only for senior centers, senior citizens.
No, but.
Is it for community center?
The Gem Grant.
Gem Grant. Thank you.
Oh, Gem Grants, okay.
Sorry, I did misspeak.
Yeah, they have senior centers and community centers.
A lot of those cowboys are seniors.
Yeah, not too many cowboys make it to senior citizen level. Put hard and put away wet.
Unless their name's Neil Thompson, right?
Yeah.
Hey, hey, hey. I resemble that remark.
Okay, anything, anything else on that? That's, that's some really good discussion, and obviously, you know, a really exciting opportunity there that can be incre- I mean, has a lot of potential there for the county going forward.
Well, and I really hope that we can build some geothermal into it. When we put the water line on the south end of Reno, or to the rec district, Ben Wellington, and myself and some other guys, we were literally standing in 87-degree water. And it was up to our waist. I mean, it was flowing up to the ground. And Scotty knows more about that probably than anybody in the valley, but
Right.
there's a ton of opportunity there. Let's put Scotty in charge.
So, the other city is looking for a place for a wall right now, and this might be a good spot for a city wall, too, but that's up to the city and their conversation, but that would be something interesting. But, and then, as we move, as we, if we have to change our location for a lot of our employees, this space will become more and more dysfunctional. And so, if we can put something into a long-term plan for a large meeting space down there, we'd be able to meet down there as Commissioners, plus have a large meeting space for the community to use. That would be helpful also.
Yeah, Commissioner Mopin, I think you touched on almost every talking point that came up during the planning process, and when we were doing the master facilities plan, we decided that this project itself had so much potential, and there were so many ideas, as Commissioner Hasbrook mentioned, that it wa- it needed to be a project on its own, on its own, and outside the scope of this master facilities plan. And so, I think we wanted to highlight in the update that since we have started on step one, which is moving the road department out of that area, yes, we are still a few months, potentially years down the road, from having them completely moved out, but if we don't start the planning process now, we're gonna be behind the ball in, in getting this implemented. So,
Absolutely.
the ideas that were thrown out there for creating a citizens commu- committee, you know, they need to be spearheaded by someone, and whether that's going to be, you know, the, the Fair Board, the Fair and Rodeo Board, or whether it's one of you Commissioners, you know, Elt represents Cascade, Neil is on the Fair Board, Sherry's done a lot of planning. I think any of you would be good candidates to take that on. But we do need to get the ball rolling on it, and it's something that if we don't start now, we might find ourselves in the position where we're spending the money on upgrading the facilities now. We end up moving into the merit title building, and now we just installed a bathroom where the employee parking needs to be, so.
No, I, I agree. I mean, it's, we need more ideas than just what's sitting around this table.
Oh, yeah, and I'm sure there's some things that they haven't even thought about.
Yeah. Absolutely.
So, kind of putting a fine point on that, who, who would be kind of the, the main point, or at least to get this process rolling? Who would you like to lead that effort?
I wouldn't think it would be the Fair Board. I mean, they're, they're too specific to one item. I think it'd be a, a bigger idea from the whole community. I mean, you gotta get the ranchers involved, you gotta get the community involved. It's like, what's gonna go on here? You look at the facilities in Cambridge, and Monterey, and Council, I mean, what do we, what's the community need? You know, it's, everybody wants something, but what do we need? That'd work for virtually everybody on some level. So, it's a.
I know whoever gets elected will get that one. I can take the lead. It's a planning document. I can, I can do that.
Yeah.
You can do that.
I think you're gonna have to break some of it up into different responsibilities for different folks. You know, it's important that we all don't get overwhelmed.
Yeah.
Right.
Because if you get overwhelmed, you, you don't have the energy. It's loss. I was thinking, actually, Johanna could.
I think I'm spearheading the MFP, so. Yeah, if Neil could take point on that, and then, you know, Clearwater has a point of contact for, for getting together a citizens commu- committee. I don't want to call it community. Anyway, and then we can work on, on getting the grant for paying for the planning of that and get the ball rolling. That'd be great.
I would think, if you think of the user groups, I think somebody from the Fair Board should be on it.
I agree.
Your president, you know, I mean, Neil does represent that, too, and then, obviously, somebody from the city's gotta be there. We're right on their footprint. You know, so if you think about user groups and the people that would be using it, it'd be interesting. Scott needs to be on it. Scott Klingon needs to be on it.
Well, and I think there's another opportunity.
A lot of folks in the community.
We've talked about it, at, uh, emergency operations stuff. If we had some scenario where there was a part of the emergency management involved in this facility, there's a ton of great grants for that as well. Maybe it's a
Maybe one on there?
Community meeting center for, you know, that kind of stuff. A place where you distribute water, food, or, I don't know, there's just so many different ways a person could go with this, that it's it's a matter of using the right groups where you know where the grants are, and help with it.
McKenzie, the grant writer? It's Scott.
This is great feedback.
And I think there's also a huge opportunity for private funding for this. There's a lot of people who like to see names on the inside of this somewhere, too, so.
Educational components? I think Eric Pengriff would be great. Maybe Joni needs to be on there on one of these.
Excellent. We'll, we'll work towards that and get a scope prepared and work with Neil on, on, you know, the, the committee, and continue to push that forward.
Perfect.
Do I have to work for Scotty?
Nope.
Don't we all?
Scotty wants to be on it. Scotty's geothermal.
Excellent. I would just, as we go through the, the other priorities, not to shortchange them, they're still very much priority. They're just, there hasn't been any, any update to them in the past six months. So, we'll kind of leave it at that.
Talk about the annex a little bit, and I don't know if that is the funding portion of it or not, but, I mean, we do have somewhat of an immediate need, because the McCall Police Department needs additional room, from what I have heard. This is third-party. So, I mean, being able to work with them to find out what their planning timeline looks like. So, I don't know if we could go after some kind of a bond or something in order to, if you build it, and your rent payments are gonna pay for the expansion on it, that's kind of a no-brainer for public, but, you know, and then we could actually move that road and end up with some additional facilities up there that might make sense. Commercial space in McCall is extremely limited, and so if.
Can we move that road? We can. Just move it over onto the site.
Over onto the side where.
What transfer station was.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We should be able to anyway.
That, that ground is not strong enough to hold up the building, but it would hold up.
Right. Okay.
Would give us more buildable space in the area that.
Move it, move it over to the west and free up that site.
If you look at the graphic that's on the next play, page, it shows this proposed site plan for the annex upgrades.
And that's exactly as Commissioner Mopin described it. You just move that road to the west, and it frees up a lot of site.
Johanna, what's the middle building?
What do we call that?
That would be equipment storage, so either you could park police vehicles under there, or they also have a secured impound storage yard, yard that they currently use that would, they would need.
Cameron, we need to take this off. That is not our property. That is, it's under the Springs ownership, I believe. That deed wasn't, I think the original intent was to lease them that land, but that deed was a transfer, so they own that.
So, how much of that do we own?
I thought, Cherry, that's where they're gonna build the new space.
They can't, because they have the same issue with the.
They could move the road and build it where the road is. Just like we're contemplating.
I don't know if there's enough room there to provide access to all those other buildings and.
That used to be the, the old McCall dump.
Yeah, that's, they've got trash underneath that ground there, too, so I don't know what they would ever use that for. But we could reroute that this direction. But I, I would really like to at least ask the police department what their timeline is, so that we have realistic expectation there. If we're not gonna ask taxpayers for a bond for this, then that might make sense to do something up there and be able to pay for a county building with the rent receipts.
For sure. Yeah, that's a, that's a really good update.
Did the county gift the food bank that ground, or did we just give them a lifetime lease?
I wasn't here then. I don't know.
That land is under, the ownership is Heartland Hunger. So, I don't know if it was gifted or sold.
I don't know how much land it was.
It was just their footprint, but.
We could move, build another food bank somewhere else. That would free up even more ground. Just ideas.
Yet the expansions shown here in this diagram would fulfill, at the time that we did this study, it would fulfill Valley County and McCall PD's needs for the years to come, 10, 15 years out into the future.
Well, the other thing I, that I want people to keep in mind, because I'm not gonna be here forever, but there's also a courtroom in the annex, and I think we're gonna see the day down the road when the cities are gonna have to start funding their own criminal prosecution, and they're gonna need a courtroom. Well, it's already, it's really a good asset, more for the city than it is the county.
Well, they already do their own prosecution.
On some things, but not, not heavier things. We've talked about that, how they do misdemeanors. The county does a lot of things for the city, McCall and the impact area, but the discussion has been, you know, do we start charging him for those functions? Or do they build their own court system and do their own thing, that's certainly down the road, but.
Yeah, really good feedback, I think if I'm hearing the Commission correctly, we'll, we'll definitely reach out to McCall Police and see what their current and future needs are, kind of refresh that, and again, if there's, if there's a path there to helping them and.
Did you also include in that, Cameron, maybe a rental valuation to see where we are as far as what we get collecting rent compared to the rest of the area? Because I think that's been the same rent since we did that. I don't think we've looked at that. It's probably, if I had to guess, worth more.
It would be interesting, too, to, if there is a way to do a rent evaluation on what other people are paying right now, again, commercial space in McCall is like nonexistent, so if we were able to build something and then be able to sustain leases on it, you know, for ten years or something like that, and actually help pay off that bond, then we've got a full facility without cost to our taxpayers, that would be.
And you're building it now.
Yeah, exactly.
That'd be a two-story facility, that's, that'd be a big facility. Almost as big as that house I'm wearing.
Sure, if you talked to the Sheriff's Department about the annex for the Sheriff's Department up there?
They would very much like to have an office, at least up there, they're currently utilizing an office space in Donley, I think.
Where in Donley?
You know, we're gonna have to confirm that, but I think the guys have a spot in Donley where they have a desk, and then, but I think, I most definitely heard them say they would like to have an office in, in the McCall area.
When we did the analysis of, like, the wants and needs, they said ideally they would have two office spaces in McCall. The deputies be able to have, have a touch base, be able to hook up to the network and do work from there.
Makes sense.
Technically, they could use that courtroom right now to do that, but.
That's, that sounds like another follow-up as well, to make sure we're coordinating with the sheriff in that conversation as well.
Is that a whole courtroom, just vacant now, not used at all?
It's used as a meeting space occasionally, so certain, there's a group that holds meetings in there maybe once a month or twice a month, and then there's the judges' quarters back behind the courtroom, and that is utilized on a regular basis.
Like an officer or something.
By the judge.
By the judge.
By the judge. They're not using it for.
But they don't use the courtroom, it was set up for juvenile court, and they've kind of done away with juvenile court over the years.
Oh, yeah.
However, it would be real easy to adjust that. Use it full-time.
It's a big room.
I know, I wired the facility when they built it.
Built in nineteen forty.
I just looked at it old.
Excellent. So, yeah, just, if there's no other questions about the other priorities or any other discussion, love to get into CFP just a bit.
Who's, uh, just to back up, who's gonna touch base with McCall Police?
I'll do that.
Do that.
Johanna, all right. So, just going quickly to the CFP. Uh, let's do twenty-one, Commissioner. So, I think the thing that's a fairly substantive update on the Gold Dust property from a financial perspective is the idea that now that we have detailed design, we have refined cost as well, and so you see there, it's, it's come down from the six-point-six million now to a four-point-one million, largely because it was a refined design, right, so you have less square footage and so on, but that's, that's, that's a really good thing. You can also see now the potential for the, the funding, so you can see that down there in that lower paragraph, there is still a gap there of one-point-two million, and there was some discussion there to potentially reprioritize some of the Roden Bridge funding to complete that project, and then, of course, the, the remainder would be, or the bulk of it would be ARPA funds, so wanted to highlight that for you all.
Well, and the other thing to keep in your, back of your mind, if we end up selling, I think it's like an acre and a quarter to Idaho Power, I'm sure those funds would probably go towards this facility as well, but I don't know what, I don't think it's gonna be, for lucky, maybe two or three hundred thousand dollars is not a lot, but every little bit helps.
Well, and Jeff did just get that Stibnite check, which was unintended, or, you know, income, he was not anticipating which is gonna meet that difference between the four-point-one and the three-point-five that he's been allocated out of ARPA, so we do have potential coverage there, I, I'm more concerned with putting desks in there and, you know, getting the last of that type of stuff done.
The interior stuff?
Yeah.
Also, the, it's not eleven-point-nine-two-five square feet, it's thirteen thousand.
Right.
Well, the revised final plans were for eleven thousand, we scaled it down from thirteen thousand, that was a majority of the cost savings.
I don't think we scaled the square footage down.
I don't remember that either, I thought we.
I think we're staying at the thirteen.
With the thirteen, well, Clerk Miller would have to.
I'm pretty certain that's what we decided to stay with.
Probably tell you in just a second.
Yeah, Cameron, I thought the four-point-one was for thirteen thousand square foot.
Okay, well, we'll confirm that and make sure that, uh, what that is, is what's reflected in the update, so.
And for me, you know, I always, you always hear the engineers and the estimated costs, I always like to see what the guy who's bidding the job is gonna come in and out.
It's amazing how that works.
That's Neil's.
Yep.
Peace.
For sure.
Well, you can pick up, you know what, you didn't think about this, or you didn't think about that, or, yeah, that's, that's a really great point.
Okay, anything else that we need to include in that? Obviously, we'll confirm the square footage and the, and the cost there, but any, anything else that you see we need a refiner include in the Gold Dust property?
Jeff mentioned last, I think it was last week, about it doesn't meet compaction for those footings, and they were, the road department was gonna dig it out and put in the right material for that foundation, because they thought they had a use for that material somewhere else, and they could kind of kill two birds with one stone there.
Okay.
Have to dig it down like eight feet.
Yeah, I think it was a.
Material.
And then come back up like three or four, build a hard base under all that concrete.
Okay, so that might be a follow-up with Jeff as well.
Be substantial amount of material to take out, and I guess that's just for the footings and the stimulants.
They're big, giant, huge footings, I think they're twelve-by-twelve by five feet or something. Hold that big building up.
Yep. Okay.
I don't have those plans, darn, but I did.
Potentially, potentially impactful there, okay.
Six months ran out.
Page twenty-two, Commissioner Mopin, we transitioned to the, the courthouse, and again, again, I'm not sure that we can update the plan per se, but again, great opportunity there for, for what's coming with the opportunities for the courthouse and the, the space there. See, we talked about the fairgrounds, I don't think there's necessarily an adjustment, it's just more of that direction, then we'll work with Neil and, and others to work on the funding of, of that master plan. And I believe that was all the updates we had in the MFP, or, excuse me, the CFP portion. Yes. So with that, I, that kind of concludes the, the trunk, we'll call it a truncated update this year, and then we'll look to continue to do the, the full-blown updates annually around this same timeframe, so you're getting all these updates and flowing right into your budget, so.
But you want us to let you know, or I'm sure Johanna will, if we end up making a purchase on the title company, that's gonna change a lot of what we do to this facility and.
Yeah, there is, there is some discussion about, you know, do we hold off with the firm update on this until, there's some firm word on that. We'll take your direction, but we feel like, you know, we wanted to make sure you got this update now, so we're not continually waiting on, on other things, it seems like there's always something, so we wanted to keep, keep the update rolling.
We should know in the next thirty days, I mean, it's not that far away, so maybe we should hold off on just finalizing this one until we get.
I think it was April twenty-ninth that we had to have the appraisal done, that's what the forty-five days was. It was April twenty-ninth.
Yeah, I think you're right.
When he was in here talking the other day.
Good, well, I appreciate you coming in and giving us up to date and out of trouble.
Excellent, yeah, we'll follow up on those.
Do you have anything to add? What do you guys think about these updates that we've recommended? Do you guys have anything you wanna add to this, and you were part of it? We don't wanna overstep your guys' input, but the opportunity came up after the initial conversation around the courthouse, so, you know, that opportunity is one we really can't miss if we can make it work at all.
Yep, the only thing I'd add is.
Scotty, could you come to the mic, please? People on YouTube wanna hear what you gotta say.
Especially from Scotty Davenport.
Scotty, Scotty Davenport, Valley County, I'd add for the future that you might wanna start in the back of your heads, and those are gone, or those that are coming in as Commissioners, you might wanna think about five people. Leave it the way it is, and then use the at-large areas of the Cascade School District and the McCall School District to pick somebody is. As an example, you got seventeen thousand people supposedly going to micro, some of those people are gonna come up here, and the economic reports that Stibnite is doing and some others are doing, are all pointing that the infrastructure for Valley County is way behind, so I'm just, my business, I always look ten, twenty years down the road, and that's why I'm just making this a comment, so just something to think about.
Scotty, can I ask a question, then?
Yeah.
In your, with your comments, so you can do five Commissioners, most of the counties are not doing that, but they are using a county manager.
Right.
So, as a citizen, you know, you would be one voice, but, you know, have you thought about a county manager versus five Commissioners?
Well, I'm not exactly happy with the way we put in the city manager at McCall, because once you get the manager in there, you've got no way of voting him out, or the citizens don't have control of it, so.
Agreed.
I'm gonna start talking to people about maybe changing that back.
Make it more of an elected position.
Elected position, and then hiring two or three people under that person that actually run different sections, instead of one person trying to run the whole picture, it's too, it's too big, it's too big for you, it's too big for them. You need to get.
Mayor with.
Yeah, you need a structure that is accessible by the citizens.
Somebody that can retain that history. We've lost, you lose a lot of history.
You can have a strong county man, or county commissioner also, they call him a judge, but, you know, one works full-time, but, you know, that is gonna have to be a long conversation, but I don't think that that necessarily has to do with capital, you know, stuff that we're working on right now, but there is a good conversation around that, we gotta do something, the three of us can't possibly cover everything that we have to cover right now, so.
Well, and I, I don't know for sure, but I think there's something in code that we can only have three Commissioners in Idaho, can't go if I, because it's been tried in other places and was shot down, but that would have to be some, some Brian Oakey research stuff. You know? Not that I'm not saying it's not a good idea, but I think it's gonna be hard to do that. But you are absolutely right, it is way bigger job than anybody ever thought it would be.
Thank you. Good to see you again.
Thank you so much, good to be with you.
Thanks.
Red for Commissioner, oh, it's too late, I should've made on time.
Friday, too late.
Johanna's in my zone, so just remember that.
I'm not, I'm in Neil's.
Oh, no, you gotta move.
My hair's not getting any browner, I can tell you that.
Okay, our next agenda is an executive session, so we're gonna have to kick folks out.
Thanks for coming in, everybody.
Thanks, everyone. Or I'm gonna make the motion, we go into an executive session, right, oh, code seventy-four-two-zero-six-one-F to communicate with legal. Second, I have a motion in a second, by rule call, please.
Thompson, aye.
Mopin, aye.
Hasbrook, aye, and Gabby, we will be in at two o'clock straight up.
What's this one about?